Aubrey Payne, are you?
And one more time for teams, for Commissioner Philemon. Commissioner, are you online and can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, I can.
Clerk Hart, are we good?
We are, yes.
Okay, great. Commissioners, I call the public meeting to order and have taken... Let's try this again. This is Commission President Hamdi Mohammed reconvening the regular meeting of May 28, 2024. The time is now 12:05 PM. We are meeting in person today at the SEA Conference Center and virtually via Microsoft Teams. Clerk Hart, please call the role of all Commissioners in attendance.
Thank you, Madam Commission President, beginning with Commissioner Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Cho.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Philemon, joining us virtually.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasagawa.
Present.
Thank you, and Commissioner Mohammed.
Present.
Thank you, we do have a quorum established with the full board here today.
Thank you, Clerk Hart. A few housekeeping items before we begin. For everyone in the meeting room today, please turn your cell phones to silent. For anyone participating on Microsoft Teams, please mute your speakers when not actively speaking or presenting. Please keep your cameras off unless you are a member of the Commission or the Executive Director participating virtually, or you are a member of the staff in presentation mode and actively addressing the Commission. Members of the public addressing the Commission during public comment may turn on their cameras when their names are called, and then you'll turn them back off again at the conclusion of your remarks. For anyone at the dais today, please turn off the speakers on any computers and silence your devices. Please also remember to address your request to be recognized, to speak through the chair, and wait to speak until you have been recognized. You'll turn your microphones on and off as needed. All the items noted here will ensure a smoother meeting. Thank you all. All votes today will be taken by a roll call method, so it is clear for anyone participating virtually how votes are casted. Commissioners will say aye or nay when their names are called. "We're meeting today on the ancestral lands and waters of the Coast Salish people, with whom we share a commitment to steward these natural resources for generations to come." This meeting is being digitally recorded and may be viewed or heard at any time on the port's website and may be rebroadcasted by King County Television. Now, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The first item of business today is the approval of the agenda. As a reminder, if a Commissioner wishes to make a general comment for or against an item on the consent agenda, it is not necessary to pull the item from the consent agenda. Rather, you may offer supporting or opposing comments in later in the meeting, once we get to that part of the agenda. These comments are in order once the motion to approve the consent agenda has been made. However, it is appropriate at this time, if a Commissioner wants to ask a question of staff or wishes to have a dialogue on a consent agenda item, to request the item be pulled for a separate discussion. Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda or a motion to rearrange today's meeting? Commissioners.
Madam President, I move that we pull Item 8D regarding salaries and benefits for employees not covered by collective bargaining agreement from consent.
Thank you, Commissioner Vice President Hasagawa. We will pull that item. Commissioners, are there any other items that you would like to pull from the consent agenda today or to rearrange any of the order of business today? Hearing none, Commissioners, the question is now on approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved, Madam President.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, the motion has been made and seconded. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any objections to approval of the agenda as amended? Hearing none, the agenda as amended has been approved. There is one special order of the day today. Clerk Hart, please read the item into the record, and then Deputy Executive Director Goon will then introduce the item, followed by Commission Strategic Advisor Erica, who will then speak on the item.
Thank you, Madam Commission President. This is Item 4A, a proclamation commemorating May as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Commissioners, as some of the fastest-growing racial and ethnic groups in the nation, Asian American and Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander communities represent a multitude of ethnicities, languages, and experiences that enrich America and strengthen our community. During May, we take time to honor, recognize, and celebrate the innumerable contributions, vibrant cultures, and rich heritage of Asian Americans and Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islander communities. Our home of Asian and Pacific Islander Employee Resource Group, known as HAPPI, is hosting several events this month, and details can be found on Compass, the internal webpage. Today's proclamation is another wonderful opportunity to celebrate these employees and their AA and NHPI members of our community. Sorry about that. I'll now turn over to Commission Strategic Advisor Erica Chung to introduce our presenters.
Good afternoon, Commission President Mohammed, Commissioners, and Deputy Director Goon. My name is Erica Chung, Strategic Advisor for the Commission Office. It is an honor to introduce a special order, a proclamation honoring Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, alongside readers from the Port of Seattle, home for Asian Pacific Islander HAPPI Employee Resource Group. As an Asian American, Korean American, it is a proud moment for me personally to introduce this order and proud to work with an organization that creates a space for us to recognize and to elevate our diverse AA and NHPI community and contributions at the Port of Seattle. Before I turn it over to our HAPPI ERG members to help us read the proclamation, I would like to recognize our four HAPPI ERG members. They are Kyoki Lau, Security Access Specialist and Native Hawaiian; Khan Tavon Sak, Lead Total Reware Specialist and Laotian American; Christian Santos, Payroll Operations and System Analyst and Filipino American; Will Tran, Building Inspector, Plan Examiner, and Chinese Vietnamese American. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Kyoki Lau.
Whereas, together, we are stronger. And, whereas, Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month is a time to reflect on the long history of Asian American and Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders across our nation, in our state and at the Port of Seattle. And, whereas, AA and NHPI Heritage Month is also a time to elevate and celebrate the innumerable contributions and achievements of Asian Americans and Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders in defending our democracy in times of crisis, in building our great nation's infrastructure, and in stimulating small business development. And, whereas, we celebrate the achievement of Vice President Kamala Harris, the first South Asian American woman to hold the second highest office in the nation. And...
Whereas, we celebrate the achievement of Mayor Bruce Harrell, the first Asian American and first biracial mayor of the city of Seattle. And, whereas, we celebrate the achievements of our Port of Seattle Commissioners in serving in leadership positions in the port's 111-year history. Sam Cho, the first Asian American and first Korean American elected to the presidency in 2023. And Toshiko Grace Hasagawa, first Asian American woman and first Japanese American woman to serve two terms as Vice President in 2023 and 2024. And, whereas, AA and NHPIs are represented at every level of staffing and leadership at the Port of Seattle, and we praise the tremendous work of Home for Asian Pacific Islanders, HAPPI, Employee Resource Group, in continuing to elevate the voices of AA and NHPIs at the Port of Seattle. And...
Whereas, we commemorate the third anniversary of the Atlanta Spa murders of six women of Asian descent and highlight the continued rise in hate and violence perpetrated against AA and NHPIs nationally and locally since the pandemic. And, whereas, AA and NHPIs are diverse, with very distinct cultures and lived experiences, representing 48 distinct Asian and Pacific Islander nations. And, whereas, it is precisely the diversity of people and perspectives within the AA and NHPIs that makes AA and NHPIs communities stronger, more resilient, and able to achieve better outcomes, as demonstrated by Port HAPPI ERG. And...
Whereas, HAPPI members representing AA and NHPIs are honored to work collaboratively against anti-Asian bias and discrimination and stand united in seeking greater opportunities for AA and NHPIs. And, whereas, the recognition of May as AA and NHPI Heritage Month is an important and meaningful step in honoring the history and contributions of AA and NHPI people and port employees. Now, therefore, the Port of Seattle Commission hereby commemorates May as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, acknowledging the contributions of the Home of Asian and Pacific Islander HAPPI ERG, committing to promoting an inclusive and unifying environment for AA and NHPIs, and reaffirming the importance of advancing AA and NHPI leaders throughout the organization, claimed by the Port of Seattle Commission this 28th day of May 2024.
Great, thank you so much for reading that proclamation. Thank you to our Home for Asians and Pacific Islander ERG group, HAPPI, such a beautiful name. We will now go ahead and get the main motion on the floor, and then we'll open it up for Commission comments at that time. Is there a motion and a second for this item, for the proclamation to be adopted?
So moved.
I'll second.
Great, the motion has been made and seconded. Commissioners, the floor is now open for your comments. Commissioner Hasagawa.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much to our HAPPI representatives who are here today and have worked on this proclamation and brought it forward for our consideration today in a public reading. And thank you so much to Erica Chung and all the other staff behind the scenes that put so much research and so much of their valuable time into drafting this for all of us. I want to acknowledge a little bit of the history that brought us to Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. It was really, I think, historically understood that, you know, who is Asian was considered by the census. You know, race is a construct. And there's a lot of folks who have historically been carved out of who is Asian and therefore were invisibilized and didn't have fair access to services, to funding. And so they organized. And visibility has always been a core piece of the fight for fairness. In the 1990s, in a movement led by Pacific Islander women, Na'opah Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders demanded to be included in this umbrella term, recognizing that there's strength in numbers and that there's strength in solidarity. However, while we recognize that, we also have to continue to hold up the continued risk of invisibilization, that our communities are not monolithic. Asians, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders come from over 40 countries across Asia and the Pacific. We speak over 100 languages and over 1,000 dialects. We come from different beliefs, from different socioeconomic backgrounds. But one thing that we have in common is that we crossed the seas to arrive at these same shores and hope for opportunity and a better life for our posterity. And I think that that is a legacy from our ancestors and for those who have braved the challenges that we're here to honor today and lift up and celebrate. You know, we have, I think, over 30 members of the union, different unions here, represented today to make sure that they're giving voice to their needs. And we also, you know, recognize that the labor movement has been what has given given voice and resonated justice for historically marginalized and exploited people. I would like to lift up and acknowledge the work of the Asian Pacific American Labor Alliance, or APALA, that has worked historically to make sure that they asserted this group of people, Asians, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders, as stakeholders in economic justice and deserving of fair access to representation as well. I also want to acknowledge that in the audience, we have the first-ever democratically-elected president of the Flight Attendants Union with us, Paula Isla Gill. So thank you for being here, and it was an honor to shake your hand earlier today. I appreciate that staff wrote Commissioner Cho and I into the verbiage of this, and it is certainly an honor to sit here as Commissioners. It is a privilege that I do not take for granted. And it's also equally important that we raise up that we are the exception and not the norm, right? And though I acknowledge and am proud of being exceptional in that way, I think what will deserve more recognition is when we don't just repeat this and see more folks elected to public office in historically exclusive spaces, but that we see it repeated over and over and over again, because that means that we have achieved institutional change. And that, I think, is the true mark of our framework and what we are hoping to be able to bring to this very noble institution. I'd just like to close by saying that we are coming out of a long weekend in observance of Memorial Day yesterday. And historically for me, Memorial Day has been a retrospective opportunity where I look at the gravestone and I see my great-grandparents who immigrated over and their reasons why and what they went through, their accomplishments, in order to pave a better way. But this year, I had the opportunity to bring with me two children, including my three-year-old, but also my infant son. And for me, it was not only an opportunity to look forward and all the reasons intergenerationally that we have to continue to strive and pay forward that legacy, but the urgent reminder to love hard on each other as a community right here, right now, and lift each other up and empower us in this moment so that we can have a brighter future. So thank you all so much for this action here today, because it truly is in the spirit of collaboration-togetherness and that we are one people, one community, one family, one earth. And so thank you for seizing this moment, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Commission Vice President Hasagawa, for those powerful remarks. Commissioner Cho?
Yes, thank you. My first mistake of the day was going after Commissioner Hasagawa.
I know, I tried to help you.
Because I'm looking at my notes and I'm like frantically crossing out things. No, thank you, Commissioner Hasagawa, for your remarks. Let me start by first thanking HAPPI for all the great work you all did. Kyoki, Khan, Christian, Will. I sincerely appreciate all you all do to represent our people at this organization. I had the opportunity to break bread with some of you at our Heritage Month brunch over some dim sum, a good times. But, you know, I just, you know, every day I come into the port and I'm reminded how special this place is as an institution. And obviously, we do this proclamation every year, at least for every year that I've been here. And one could say, oh, it's getting old, it's redundant. But I feel strongly that this isn't necessary. I think we can have a month of the year, you know. And quite frankly, I think it's important because it's a reflection of how important this institution is for so many, mainly because I think on a fundamental level, the Port of Seattle and specifically this facility here, Seattle Tacoma International Airport, serves as a gateway to a region for countless immigrants who contribute to our diversity, our strength, and what makes us so unique as a country, my parents included. And I think most folks in here know that in the late 80s, my parents immigrated to this airport when they first got here. And so being here is a tremendous privilege and an honor. And I hope that, you know, throughout the work that we do as Commissioners, you know, through our unique experiences in life, one of the things that we always try to do is pay it forward, right? Ensure that, as we like to say, it's great to be the first, but we should never be the last, right? And as Commissioner Hasagawa says, that we pay it forward in a way that we see many, that we are not the exception but the standard. And that doesn't just go for Commissioner Hasagawa and I, but it actually goes for all of you, members of HAPPI, API members of the Port family who continue to do the work here. Because at the end of the day, you all are on the ground, making this place the gateway, the welcoming place for people like our families who came through this gateway as immigrants. And so that's why I really wanted to thank you all, in addition to all the great comments Commissioner Hasagawa has made, because this place wouldn't be the same without our ERG, all the work that you do. And the last thing that I want to say is that I love that we get all these opportunities to celebrate each and respective communities. But I also want to emphasize, it's always important to work across communities, right? And we have amazing ERGs throughout this organization. And over the years, whether it's through the pandemic or whether it's through the Black Lives Matter movement, we've had opportunities to show solidarity and allyship with our brothers and sisters in the Black community, in the Latinx community, in the Veterans community, in the LGBTQ community. And I also want to thank you for all that. I'm reminded of a Martin Luther King quote, I think it's really pertinent to this, and it's that, "We all came here on different ships, but we're on the same boat now." And so I really appreciate all the work you do. I look forward to the continued growth that I will see in HAPPI. And you all know that you have huge champions in Commissioner Hasagawa and myself. So happy NHPI Heritage Month, and I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Cho, for those powerful comments as well. Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, thanks. Hard to add much to that, particularly from my vantage point. But I will say that one of the things I think about a lot as we think about our strategic advantage at the Port of Seattle relative to other ports is that we are a part of a Pacific community. And while the history in the United States tends to slant toward a kind of Atlantic viewpoint, whether it's the East Coast or relationship with Europe, the future is the Pacific. And so our relationships with both Asian countries and directly the Asian American communities in the United States and in our region give us an enormous strategic advantage. And so, quite honestly, we need to turn our gaze away from the Atlantic and focus on the Pacific from a pure business standpoint. That is where our growth is. And so, I mean, I know that's not the sort of message of... But I really genuinely think, I'm grateful that we get to have leadership that reflects that future-looking perspective on our institution. So thank you for bringing this up. I'm going to vote for it every year. I don't get tired of it, I think it's a great thing. Thanks for a few minutes.
Absolutely. Any additional comments?
I'll just chime in quickly and just say I appreciate the quote from Martin Luther King in that we are all in the same boat. And sometimes I think it's very important to recognize that very basic fact. But I also think alliances are very important, too, to strengthen each other. And I'm just very happy to be part of this unusual group, the Asian Jewish Alliance, and because of our shared experience of discrimination of late. And so I appreciate the unity and of HAPPI's efforts to keep us in front of us. So thank you again for all your work.
Thank you, Commissioner Philemon. Yeah, and I will just quickly add, I echo all of the sentiments of my colleagues. And I just want to say, I feel very lucky to be able to sit next to Commission Vice President Hasagawa and Commissioner Cho. You both represent the Asian community broadly so well, and you bring both the cultural understanding, the business understanding to the Commission. And lots of gratitude to the both of you. And also recognizing our Deputy Executive Director Goon, who is Korean American herself and is the second-most highest-ranking person at the Port of Seattle today. And so thank you for your public service and the work that you do every day. And to all of the staff at the Port of Seattle, all the ERG members of HAPPI, thank you so much for the work that... Japanese, oh, okay, I got that right. I stand corrected. Executive Director Goon, who is Japanese American and Chinese American.
But you can be Korean, too, I'm okay with that.
There's just a lot going on there, so it's okay.
That's like when, as a Somali, people think I'm Ethiopian, right? So my mistake. But I do appreciate that leadership, the leadership that you bring to the Port of Seattle as well and to our broader community. And really just appreciate the comments of solidarity, that that does make us stronger. And I think we represent that well. We're diverse by race on this commission, also by religion, as you heard from Commissioner Philemon, whether it's Jewish Americans, Muslim Americans, represented on this community. I hope that the larger community feels proud of that. I hope that the larger community feels proud of that. And to Commissioner Culkins' point, I do think that that makes us stronger from a business standpoint. If we're going to compete in a diverse marketplace today, we need to be represented by our entire community. And yeah, we, we bring strength up there as well. And so, thank you all for those comments. With that said, Clerk Hart, please call the roll for the vote, and Commissioners, please say aye or nay when your name is called.
Thank you. We'll begin with Commissioner Hasagawa.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Cho?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Culkins?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Felomen? Commissioner, you're muted.
Just give us a thumbs up.
I heard it. Thank you. And Commissioner Mohammed?
My bad, my bad. Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mohammed?
Aye.
Thank you. Five ayes, zero nays for this item.
Great, the motion passes. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Executive Director's Report. Deputy Executive Director Goon, you have the floor at this point.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm sitting in for Executive Director Metrick while he's away on business travel in Australia, participating in a program of policy opportunities related to energy and security sponsored by the Aspen Institute. I would also like to acknowledge the Memorial Day holiday yesterday and express my gratitude to all of the Port staff who have served in the military for risking their lives in service of our country. This is more than just a long weekend or a marker for the beginning of the summer. Memorial Day was established as a federal holiday to remember and honor the men and women who died while serving in the United States Armed Forces. Their sacrifice should never be forgotten. I hope everyone was able to use the holiday to recharge and reflect on members of their family who provided this valuable service. Before we continue with today's meeting, I would like to share some quick highlights. Earlier this month, we held a groundbreaking for our Maritime Innovation Center at Fisherman's Terminal. A project many years in the making, the Maritime Innovation Center is designed to be a beacon for innovation, transforming one of the oldest port structures into the state-of-the-art facility that would attract investments and entrepreneurs to Seattle. Congratulations to the Economic Development Team and many others across the port on this milestone. At our seaport, we welcomed the Celebrity Edge cruise ship to our port for the first time. Our cruise season is well underway, and we look forward to sharing more about this line of business at a future meeting. At our airport, our teams are still crunching the numbers for Memorial Day weekend, but this is usually the start of the busiest summer travel season. We do know that on Friday before Memorial Day, TSA officers screened more than 2.9 million individuals at airport checkpoints nationwide, setting a new one-day record. Thank you to all the teams who kept our operations running smoothly during this period. I also wanted to provide an update on staff work, staff work on the Sound Insulation Repair and Replacement Pilot Program. Staff has defined three phases in the timeline associated with the assessment: planning, surveying, and reporting, as well as criteria for ensuring outreach incorporates an equitable approach. Outreach began last week when awareness postcards were mailed to approximately 3,200 households in the 65 DNL. On June 3, these residents will receive the first of three survey mailings. After we collect survey data, we will conduct the acoustic testing phase to inform our final approach. In addition to this work, the port will also, also host a Part 150 in-person kickoff meeting on June 5, 6, and 8. More details for those events will be on our port website. Moving to today's commission meeting, I would like to highlight a few items. Many of the items on our agenda today relate to asset preservation and facility upgrades for our employees. Item 8B on our agenda is an additional funding for a facility upgrade to support our Port Construction Services team. Item 8C helps preserve our assets at Bell Harbor Marina and Pier 66 through pile wrapping and protection. Item 8E supports our sustainable fleet plan through investing in infrastructure to power our vehicles. Item 8F supports a facility upgrade for our firefighters. And Item 8G is a competition waiver for a grant application for the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Clean Ports Program Climate and Air Quality Planning Grant Application. You will also hear a resolution related to our mitigation bank program and progress on our redevelopment of Fisherman's Terminal. Lastly, I would like to welcome many of our labor representatives who are in attendance today. We were in a briefing earlier where we were, we heard updates on our efforts to release more First Amendment activity areas, so I appreciate their willingness to be here and share their concerns. Commissioner, that concludes my remarks for today.
Thank you, Deputy Executive Director Goon, for that report. So, moving us along in the agenda, we are now at Committee Reports. Erica Chung, will you provide the report for us?
Good afternoon again, Commission President Mohammed, Commissioners and Deputy Executive Director Goon. I have three committee reports for you today. On May 21, Commissioners Felomen and Culkins convened the Waterfront Industrial Lands Committee Meeting with three items for briefing and discussion, which was an update on WASCA, a briefing of the upcoming future lines of business study, and an update on the real estate strategic plan. The Ports, Portwide Arts and Culture Board met on May 21 also with Commissioner Felomen in attendance. The board received briefings on two potential new maritime art installation projects at Pier 66 to beautify new equipment necessary for shore power at the pier, and a potential art installation at Fisherman's Terminal. The board also received status updates on the redesign of the Ralph Helmick piece and update on the current projects at Checkpoint 1. The Highline Forum met on May 22 with Commissioner Felomen chairing the meeting and with Commission, with Community Co-Chair De Moines Councilmember Mahoney in attendance. The forum received updates from the host city of Toquilla Administrator Marty Wine on changes to the city leadership and within the community and their efforts to address the needs of asylum seekers. On START 2023 Annual Report from Port Community Engagement Manager Marco Melanese and Government Relations Director Nate Camino, most notable was the success of the START-led advocacy for a number of federal policy issues included in the 2023 FAA Reauthorization Bill that was signed into law on May 16. They also received an update on the Part 150 Study from Port Aviation Noise Program Manager Tom Baggerstrom, I apologize for the killing of the name there. And the Part 150 Noise and Land Use Compatibility Study will evaluate the noise using an FAA required model, which will determine the noise footprint around SCA Airport. They also received an update and phasing of the Sound Insulation Repair and Replacement Pilot Program from Senior Manager of Aviation Noise Program Riot McMullin, which was created by the commission on February 27, noting that postcards in multiple languages have been sent out alerting homeowners to surveys that will be, that, that they will receive after June 3. And an overview of, an overview of Sustainable Aviation, Sustainable Airport Master Plan Near-Term Project Environmental Review Process by Port Aviation Senior Environmental Program Manager Steve Rible. The draft National Environmental Policy Act environmental assessment is still expected to be released in fourth quarter of this year, at which time the public will have an opportunity to comment. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica, for that update. Commissioners, are there any questions regarding committee reports? Hearing none, I'll move us along in the agenda. We are now at the public comment section of our agenda. The Port Commission welcomes public comment as an important part of the public process. Comments are received and considered by the commission in its deliberations. Before we take public comment, let's review our rules for in-person and virtual public comments. Clerk Hart, please play the recording.
We all get nervous at this part.
The recording is long.
It's only three minutes.
The Port of Seattle Commission welcomes you to our meeting today. As noted, public comment is an important part of the public process, and the Port of Seattle Commission thanks you for joining us. Before proceeding, we will overview the rules governing public comment for your general information. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak unless otherwise revised by the presiding officer for the purposes of meeting efficiency, and the speaker shall keep their remarks within the allotted time provided. A timer will appear on the screen, and a buzzer will sound at the end of the speaker's comment period. The commission accepts comments on items appearing on its agenda and items related to the conduct of port business. The presiding officer will ask speakers to limit their comments to these topics. This rule applies to both introductory and concluding remarks. Disruptions of commission public meetings are prohibited. General disruptions include but are not limited to the following: speaking before being recognized by the presiding officer; holding or placing banners and signs in the meeting room in a way that endangers others or obstructs the flow of people or view of others at the meeting; intentionally disrupting, disturbing, or otherwise impeding attendance or participation at a meeting; refusing to follow the direction of the presiding officer or security personnel; attempting to use the comment time for purposeful delay without conveying a discernible message; using the comment period to assist in a campaign for reelection of any person to any office or for the promotion of or opposition to any ballot proposition except when addressing action being taken by the commission on a ballot proposition appearing on its agenda; directing public comments to the audience; engaging in abusive or harassing behavior, including but not limited to derogatory remarks based on age, race, color, national origin, ancestry, religion, disability, pregnancy, sex, gender, sexual orientation, transgender status, marital status, or any other category protected by law; the use of obscene or profane language and gestures, assaults or other threatening behavior, and sexual misconduct or sexual harassment. For safety purposes, individuals are asked not to physically approach commissioners or staff at the meeting table during the meeting. Individuals may provide written public comment before or after the meeting, and in addition, speakers may offer written materials to the commission clerk for distribution during their testimony to the commission. A detailed list of the public comment rules is available through the commission clerk. If a meeting is disrupted by an individual in attendance in the meeting room or by an individual providing public comment in person or virtually, the port will impose progressive consequences that may result in exclusion from future meetings. Written materials provided to the clerk will be included in today's meeting record. The clerk has a list of those prepared to speak. When your name is called, please come to the testimony table or unmute yourself if joining virtually. Repeat your name for the record and state your topic related to an item on the agenda or related to the conduct of port business. For those joining virtually, when you have concluded your remarks, please turn off your camera and mute your microphone. Our public comment period will now commence. Thank you again for joining us today.
Is that really three minutes?
It is, yeah.
All right, just a minute.
Yeah, and it's the revised version, the long one was more. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and pull up our timer.
Thank you, Clerk Hart. And while you do that, if I could just say, I wanted to echo Executive, Deputy Executive Director Goon's comments just during her report. I want to thank our labor unions for being here today, and specifically, I want to just inform folks that we did extend our executive session today to discuss the issue around being able to assemble at the airport and to exercise your First Amendment, and we're expecting a positive report out to our labor unions within the next couple of days or maybe about a week. And so, I, I'm looking forward to that report reaching our, our labor unions. And again, thank you for, all of you for being here, and public comment is an important part of our commission deliberation process, and so, we encourage you all to come and, and provide these comments, and so, I look forward to hearing from folks today. With that said, Clerk Hart, please call the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Commission President. Members of the commission, we have one person who has signed up virtually today. We then have 15 speakers from in-room, so we'll call our virtual speaker first, and that is Marie Bell. Marie, please restate your name for the record and your agenda item or topic related to the conduct of port business, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Marie Bell. Good afternoon, President Mohammed and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My comment today is for the benefit of 8D, the adoption of Resolution Number 3823 and the resolution amending the policy directive for salaries and benefits for employees not covered by the collective bargaining agreement established by Resolution Number 3820 and providing an effective date for all amendments as of June 1, 2024. I'm a member of the Black community at the Port of Seattle, and I have both Black and Klinkit heritage. I've been an employee since February of 1995. And as a member of the Black and Brown community, I feel we have been overlooked and underpaid. I also believe that the compensation package is a result of systemic racism that exists within the organization. It is my experience, the port promotes our coworkers to positions that perpetuate the inequality they claim to be addressing with equity. They hire us, and when we share our work experience with our coworkers, those same coworkers end up becoming our supervisors and our managers. And from the findings of the Employee Engagement Survey and the Women of Color Assessment, the port's failure to promote tenured Black and Brown employees is having a significant impact on morale. Many of us have already reached the maximum of both the current and the new grading structure. And personally, my new grade is the equivalent of what it was in 2004. This compensation package does not reflect equity, and honestly speaking, it expresses a total lack of respect and disregards the years that I have served this organization. Thank you for your time.
Clerk Hart, please call the next speaker.
Thank you, Marie. Our next speaker from in-room is Jeanette Abbeve. And for all of the people that I called today, I apologize in advance if I don't pronounce your name properly. Please forgive. And if you could, please go ahead and restate your names for the record and your topic related to the conduct of port business or your agenda item, please.
Okay. My name is Jeanette Abbeve. Hi, everyone. My name is Jeanette Abbeve, and I'm a G2 employee here at the SeaTac Airport. I'm here before you today on behalf of all my coworkers to let you know that we have been fighting for the healthcare the past couple of months. We have presented you with our personal stories and petitions amending on healthcare. We understand that there is some work being done behind this sense, but we also want to let you know that we are not going to give up on this fight. I'm wearing this pin today, and you will see my coworker is wearing them too. We want everyone to know that we need affordable healthcare, and we need it now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Babayant. Sorry, Karen. And if you could go ahead and repeat your name for the record and your agenda item or topic related to the conduct of port business, please.
Hi, remember me? It's still Karina Babayant, wheelchair agent from G2. So, nice to meet you guys here. Thank you for having us as speakers again. And I'm here today with my coworkers, you know, sitting on the back and the union team to remind you guys that we still need the healthcare. We're still here, we're still fighting for it. We also have the badges that supposedly all the people who signed the petition and more will wear it on their badges across the airport, that we keep people aware that, you know, we're still fighting for the healthcare, we still need it. I'm still sick, my mom still needs the healthcare. And we just want to remind you guys that we really hope on your decision, and we really want you guys to not only improve the airport from the inside as a construction part that is going on, right, but also for the people who work here and make this all possible. So, yeah, we really hope on that, and we, you know, we keep fighting, we keep staying aware, and we did not forget. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katie Garro. And Katie, if you could go ahead and repeat your name for the record and your agenda item or topic related to the conduct of port business, please.
Happy to. Katie Garro, she and her pronouns. I'm the Executive Secretary Treasurer for MLK Labor, and I would like to talk about badge access and First Amendment rights for workers here at the airport. MLK Labor, as you well know, is a coalition of hundreds of thousands of unionized workers, including airport workers, many of whom labored here through the pandemic and are holding up the industry in a deluge of air travel currently. These workers want to be able to have the right to freely assemble, to win a fair contract, and to and to be able to have a union. In October of last year, MLK Labor raised these concerns around these two key issues. We sent a letter, and we've had a couple of meetings. Workers who want to draw public attention to their cause, like the flight attendants who you'll hear from soon, aren't able to have the large-scale actions and demonstrations that we need to be able to garner public attention to win support for our cause. As you know, sit-ins, pickets, marches are tactics that the labor movement and the civil rights movement and many other social movements use and rely on to be able to win public support for our causes. Airport leadership has told us that we can't demonstrate inside the airport like we used to because of TSA policies. But we've talked to our colleagues in San Francisco and in Los Angeles, and these problems or these policies do not seem to be an issue there. Thousands of workers in this airport are exploited every day. And currently, there is no structure that allows for a union organizer to enter into the airport to talk to a worker unless a company here authorizes it. This system is unworkable and puts workers at risk of retaliation during a union organizing campaign. I know that all of you commissioners would consider yourselves pro-union. However, currently, the policies that SEA has for airport workers around First Amendment rights and around badge access for union organizers are hostile to union organizing and are not helpful. So we ask today that you help rectify these policies to be in line with our shared values of democracy, justice, fairness, and self-determination. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Our next speaker is Daria Noen Nola. And if you could please restate your name for the record, far better than I probably did. And your agenda item or topic related to the conduct of port business, please.
Hi, my name is Diana Noen Nala. I am an organizer with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers. I just wanted to speak about my experience as an organizer here, trying to make organizing efforts. In my experience, like Katie Garro recently said, it's hostile. I just want to share an experience here. So picture this. Me as an organizer, multiple times I've been here, and I've been speaking with workers before or after their work. And they're meeting with me, you know, in a very vulnerable situation, talking about and opening up about their interest in organizing. And a security officer walks in front of you and is kind of just watching, seeing what's going on, and then approaches you and asks you to leave the premises. As an organizer, we should be allowed to have First Amendment rights and speak to our people that are workers that are interested in organizing. And if you are an organizer and you're speaking to somebody that's very vulnerable and afraid already, to have an officer or a security guard ask you to leave the premises in the middle of your conversation, that deteriorates trust. That takes away all opportunity and all vulnerability that the worker no longer will have and will no longer be brave enough to speak to you as an organizer. So I just want to share this to the commissioners and let you know that this is what's happening to organizers out here in Seattle, here at the airport, that are trying to make organizing efforts and share their own experiences of what unionizing can do for them. I'm a second-generation unionized member. I actually am a first-generation American from my family that immigrated here from Laos and Thailand. And I know that unionizing has changed my life and can change many more. But not having our First Amendment rights upheld here and being able to speak about organizing is really, really sad. And it's really hard to see that the tenants here are in support of allowing their workers to unionize when their security guards are telling us to leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Our next speaker is Michelle Felhauer. And Michelle, if you could repeat your name for the record and your agenda item or topic related to the conduct of port business, please.
Yes, hi. My name is Michelle Felhauer. Thank you for having me this afternoon. I just wanted to speak on the First Amendment and access...
Michelle, can you pull your mic closer? I think, I believe it's on.
I wanted to speak on the First Amendment.
Is the mic on? Sorry, sorry, Michelle.
Picked the wrong ones.
Maybe we'll just have her move to the middle. Or you can do that.
Try this again. Thank you. My name is Michelle Felhauer with the IAM, Local 2202, out of here. I just want to speak on the First Amendment, some of the examples of what I have experienced. One of the examples I have is why seated down by the security door, just taking a moment, was talking to one of the other agents, was then had the duty managers show up stating I had a table set up handing out flyers, which was not the case, but was then returned, you know, when they saw I did not have that happening. I stood up. I was walking around, waiting just to talk to some people. And I was then approached again by the duty manager and the Port of Seattle Police, was asked if I was surveying or handing out any information or soliciting. I explained, nope, just waiting for a coworker. And they were asked me to leave since I did have some flyers in my hand that was handed to me. I was also been asked to leave during the time of talking to members who want to organize. I have been asked when on the First Amendment right of a permit on the skybridge, have been approached by the Port of Seattle Police to verify my permits. Or when I do have the permits, I'm on the skybridge. I have also had the duty managers come out to verify our permits, which I would assume that they already know we have the permits. They have come out to state that we are blocking traffic. And when asked to show us the video of how we are blocking the traffic, they would not do that. Just simple harassment on the process of organizing.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next speaker is Dominic Oheda. And Dominic, if you could repeat your name for the record and your agenda item or topic related to the conduct of port business, please.
Hello, I'm Dominic Oheda. I am speaking about badge access and First Amendment rights. I'm Dominic Oheda with UFCW 3000. We represent Hudson and duty-free workers at the Sea-Tac Airport. I won't give a speech about why unionized workers are important because many of you have accepted our campaign contributions, and we've helped canvas for you all. I know two of you have helped canvas for us. So I'll focus on the greater power imbalance that our workers have as these national companies operate here. Where are workers to exercise their First Amendment rights and demonstrate against the employers in their contract or fight for a fair contract? Hudson recently acquired a company named Stellar, which also operates at this airport. These companies are growing, and the way workers fight these increasingly powerful companies is by increasing their rights to fight. Unions under MLK Labor have been more than patient in accommodating to the Port of Seattle commissioners and staff to have workers' rights respected at this airport. Sea-Tac is special as a major airport in the West Coast, and it's special because it treats unions with the most hostility and indifference. At UFCW 3000, we've had unrestricted badge access for over a decade. I've been the union rep for our members for two years. I've gone through the appropriate security requirements to receive this badge and go through security every time I enter. Why are our union siblings restricted from receiving badges or go through unreasonable burdens for their badge? Badge policies should keep airport goers safe, not unions and workers' rights out. UFCW and our members will stand together with our fellow unions as long as it takes, either with this commission or the next. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And thank you, Dominic. Our next speaker is Stefan Moritz. Stefan. And Stefan, if you could please repeat your name for the record and your topic related to the conduct of port business or your agenda item, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Stefan Moritz with United here, Local 8. Good to see you all. It's been a while. I want to talk about badging access and free speech. I'm going to focus on badges. Local 8, United here, used to have a direct badging relationship with the Port of Seattle in the past. That was important because it created a level playing field, and workers were not dependent on the goodwill of their employers, on who they can talk to, when they can talk to them, and how they are being treated when they talk to a union representative. That right was taken away. I don't remember exactly. Somewhere like eight to 10 years ago. One example, which echoes what you've already heard. One of our union organizers, Cindy Richardson, who had worked at the airport for 30 years and has been with the union for the next 20 years, was talking to workers. She was wearing a badge issued from one company. She was talking to workers. She knows a lot of people. They come up to talk to her. All of a sudden, port security shows up and says, you have to leave. You are not authorized to talk to this group of people. Turns out, a company representative, an employer, had called the port security on Cindy, and she was escorted out of the terminal. And again, as somebody already said, that is chilling, right? Because workers, speaking to her, are all of a sudden thinking like, I don't know if I want to talk to the union. That seems kind of tricky to me, right? So that's where we're at. I think one of the solutions that we had proposed in the many conversations that we had about this topic is that the unions should have a direct badging relationship with the port. It used to work. We never had a violation in all of our years that we had that. The unions are willing to be reasonable about what the rules are around having those badges. But we should not be dependent on employers to have access to workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Stefan.
Our next speaker is Paula Isla McGill. And Paula, if you could please repeat your name for the record and your agenda item or topic related to the conduct of port business, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Paula Isla McGill. I am the local council president for Alaska Airlines Flight Attendants, represented by Association of Flight Attendants CWA, Council 19. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today on the First Amendment activities policies here at Sea-Tac. For over 18 months, our members at Alaska Airlines, which are the largest and most passenger-facing work group for Alaska, have been in contentious contract negotiations with management. In February, our flight attendants overwhelmingly voted to authorize a strike by a vote of 99.48%. It is the first time we've taken such a drastic step in over 30 years since our historic chaos strike in 1993. Since July 2023, our members have held four informational pickets at Sea-Tac to raise public awareness regarding our financial struggles amid contract negotiations. It has been greatly disappointing that the impact of our message and the voices continue to be silenced by the restrictive policies of First Amendment activities at Sea-Tac Airport. Beginning at airports should serve as a powerful tool for flight attendants and airport workers to raise awareness about issues such as fair wages, adequate rest periods, and safe and improved working conditions. But we cannot do this when the Port of Seattle confines us to a remote location that does not even serve as the main access point to the airport. We need to be at the departure level, near the ticket counters, where passengers can hear and see that the airlines that they are flying on are poorly treating the cabin crew that is supposed to take care of them and keep them safe. At Sea-Tac, we are limited to 25 participants at the flag pavilion and two per skybridge. That is unusually low and unnecessarily infringes on our free speech rights. 25 people is less than 1% of the 3,264 flight attendants based in Seattle for Alaska Airlines. We are planning yet another picket on June 13, which is our Worldwide Day of Action for Flight Attendants. We are asking to be able to picket and be more visibly seen. We're just asking to be seen and heard by the very people that we are trying to reach at our place of work. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Clerk Hart.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nicole Grant. And Nicole, if you could repeat your name for the record and your agenda item or topic related to the conduct of port business, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Nicole Grant with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 46. And I'm here to speak about two things. One is the First Amendment rights of workers and unions at Sea-Tac Airport. And another thing is my members' contract as electricians at the Port of Seattle, at Sea-Tac. And I feel as though they are related. This Friday will mark the one-year anniversary of when Port Electrician's Union Contract expired. And it is not a best practice to let a contract expire for over a year before coming to an agreement. We know that the Port of Seattle Port Management has and can be the best, can lead in best practices. But this is not that. So we're looking to turn a corner here. I believe that we're close. There is a last topic of benefits that has been secured by other construction unions and building trades, like operating engineers or plumbers. And we want to make sure that electricians have the same benefit as other construction workers who are our peers. But if we could get that wrapped up this week and vote that contract, it could come in in less than a year. And I think that would be a milestone to beat. And hopefully, it won't come to that next year or with our texts that are also bargaining. On the topic of the First Amendment, I just want to say that I worked here for four years as a union electrician. And it was a long time ago. And when I think back on it, I think of all the cool stuff I did and all the incredible people I met. But I also think about the times that I was in real, serious danger. And the idea that my union wouldn't have access to me or to a potential new union member when they need it is unacceptable. And I think it's something that the commission has the power to address. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments. Clerk Hart?
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Shannon Sanchez. And Shannon, if you could please repeat your name for the record and your agenda item or topic related to the conduct of port business, please.
Hi, I'm Shannon Sanchez. I am here to speak on badge access. I'm a union representative at Teamsters Local 117. I represent members here at the port, working at the credential specialist, employee parking bus drivers, rental car facility bus drivers, as well as the cashiers over at the Toll Plaza. As a union, we also represent the traffic support specialist, as well as the Port of Seattle Police. So we're a little bit everywhere. When I come to the port to meet with my members, it's not as easy as one might think. I'm often left knocking on doors and windows, trying to get somebody's attention to be able to have access to my members. I am here often throughout the month. We have new employee orientations, labor management committee meetings. I have investigations for potential disciplinary matters, checking on working conditions, as well as posting important union information on the union boards. There's a lot of time of mine wasted just trying to get in and get access to my members. The most difficult is probably the north employee parking lot, where I go and see my employee parking bus drivers. There's a security gate there, and I often get held up there at the gate, trying to explain who I am, why I'm there, how long I'm going to be there, and what exactly I'm doing. And in the meantime, there's traffic piling up behind me, trying to get access, as most people don't leave themselves enough time to get on the bus and get to work on time. So it causes an incredibly stressful situation. And even if all of the cards line up, I still have to get a supervisor on the other end to answer the phone to say it's okay to grant me access to just see my members. It absolutely should not take that long for me to have access to my members. And for many unions, it doesn't. Some unions already have badge access, which is actually news to me, because the first time I came here, I thought to myself how easy and nice it would be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Joshua Welter. Joshua, if you could repeat your name for the record, your agenda item or topic related to the conduct of port business, please.
Joshua Welter, Teamsters Local 117, Commission President Mohammed and members of the Commission. Thanks for the opportunity to testify today. I'd like to speak about airport taxi. Last year, in February, you all voted for a commission order for the next five years of the taxi program. There's a few items that also were spelt out for ongoing oversight in terms of improvements around dispute resolution and taxi marketing. We've been working over the course of the last year to provide proposals in good faith on those issues. And I think that we're getting to the point where additional oversight from the Commission is going to be, you know, helpful to, you know, kind of get to the, you know, get the resolution that we want to see for those issues. So thank you for your oversight. And also, I just want to say, standing here in solidarity with my union siblings on the issues of badge access and First Amendment free speech. So thanks so much.
Thank you. For those comments, Clerk Hart?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Warku Belineh. Warku, if you could go ahead and restate your name for the record and your agenda item or topic that you want to speak about today.
Hello, all your dear commissioners. Good to see you all. My name is Warku Belineh. I am driving taxi, airport taxi. Also, I am a union member. I would like to speak with you about taxi marketing, a topic that was included in the Commissioner Taxi Order in February of last year. Our union developed a proposal to support taxi marketing, the following encouragement of the port, Commissioner particularly Commissioner Conklin. We present our proposal to ports in October of last year. We are still waiting for written response from the port. Disputing, being disappointed, at a slow pace. We hope you will receive a meaningful written response in our next meeting with the port staff, so we can collaborate productively on the development of a program. At last, I am, thank you for your oversight and commitment to taxi drivers. Thanks so much.
Thank you for those comments. Clerk Hart?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Habej Jamaq. And Habej, if you could go ahead and repeat your name for the record.
My name is Habej Jamaq. I'm one of the driver union. I'm speaking about the airport taxi driver union members. I would like to speak to you about union effort to support fair dispute and solution for taxi drivers. Following the Port Commissioners' Order of February last year, we have been negotiating with the port around appeal procedure. There are two issues that are remaining that we need to oversight. Our union believes that, number one, our union believes that it should be fair, objective, and standard for when the port restricted driver ability to work. Our union believes a bill should be had by neutral decision maker. Thank you for your oversight and commitment. And thank you, the employees, port employees, Jeff Wolf and Peter Lee. Thank you for working with us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker, Madam Commission President, is Jimmy Limerick.
Welcome.
And Jimmy, if you could go ahead and restate your name for the record and your agenda item or topic that you want to speak about related to the conduct of port business, please.
Hello, my name's Jimmy Limerick. I have Terry Hislop, my vice president. I'm the president of the ILWU Local 9. I represent the security and operations workers here at CTAC Airport. And I'm here to talk to you about First Amendment and badge access things. I'm here in support of my fellow brothers and sisters from all the representative employees you've heard from today and from the MLK. And I appreciate all the things that they have done to address this issue with you. Yesterday was Veterans Day. I'm a veteran, 21 years of the United States Navy, and I wanted people to know that a lot of people sacrificed, as we celebrated or remembered yesterday, for First Amendment, the freedom to assemble, the freedom of speech, and also the laws that pertain to union organizing, that people have the right to do that. I've been shocked and dismayed sometimes when I've seen some of the instances of people trying to just get together and talk as a group, as a port community, and then be dispersed by the airport duty managers or some other entity here at the port. An example of that was several months ago, I saw the IBEW with about four or five people out on the sidewalk on Highway 99, holding a sign. And right across the entrance, on the other side of a sidewalk, were two ADMs with their arms crossed, staring them down. I brought that up to Labor Relations during our contract negotiations, that I was very disappointed that the port would do such a thing. And I took it as a form of intimidation. I wanted to say that I think we should celebrate our union employees. We should celebrate our labor unions. They're the bread and butter of this port. The nonrepresentative employees do a good job, too. I'm not discounting anything they do, but the union employees come to work every day. They do the hard work. They deserve the respect of their employer. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Clerk Hart, I think we are at our last speaker.
Yes, our last speaker today is J.C. Harris. And J.C., if you could repeat your name for the record and your agenda item or topic related to the conduct of port business, please.
J.C. Harris, ctacnoyves.info. So 3,200 out of 9,600 homes with port packages received these lovely postcards. I think it's fair to say that everyone assumed that when you created Order 2404, that our over 1,000 members would have at least some nominal involvement in the assessment process. But the program was not only designed with no public input, it was rolled out with no heads up. Many people receiving these postcards have already tossed them because they have no idea what they mean. Of the 10.5 million allocated for the program, over half is for this assessment. From what we can see, that consists of 3,200 postcards, 3,200 surveys, and 30 acoustic tests before a final report, where you had intended to begin construction in 2025. The majority of the narrative in the presentation and survey concerns windows. I remind you that a port package is not just windows, it's a system. The presentation mentions acoustic testing, but not installation, treatments to ceilings, walls, insulation. It also fails to discuss HVAC and airflow, which was a component of many thousands of these installations and required a sign-off by a licensed engineer. And there's nothing in the presentation that explains how you actually get to fixing anyone's home in 2025. And we're struggling to understand how 32 postcards, surveys, and 30 site tests represents $5 million in value of state and federal taxpayers' money. Even after getting a state law passed and free money to do this assessment, you're continuing to promote a tired narrative of determining if there is a problem, rather than simply making it easy for people to get their port packages fixed. Please contact us, and let's develop a program that can actually make that happen, according to 2404. Thank you for your time.
Madam Commission President, thank you, J.C. Madam Commission President, we do have another speaker who is asking to speak. There is Melinda George Henderson.
Please proceed.
And Melinda, if you could restate your name for the record and your topic related to the conduct of port business or your agenda item. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Melinda George Henderson. I am the Local AFA 19 Vice President here in Seattle for Alaska Airlines. This here is Jerry. He's my person that I'm always with 24/7, and we work with Paula. Does this come out? There we go. That's a little more comfortable. Thank you. I had a bunch of stuff on here, written down, three, four, five different ways that I was going to address everybody. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you so much for having us. Instead of doing that, what I think I want to do is just maybe go over a little bit of history and come to where we are right now. So I've worked here at the port for 32 years, since 1992. I've seen a lot of things change. And when I first started out with Alaska Air Group, I did have a port badge. I had port access. And, excuse me, I'm sorry. I am speaking about port access, port badge access, and the First Right Amendments. So port badging back then was quite a bit different, and I was thankful of the way that it actually operated. Flight attendants don't go through the same type of port badging that the rest of ground service or anyone else that actually needs access to the port would go through it. But I do believe that it's very important, especially for those that are trying to organize. What I have seen, I have seen in the past, up through almost the pandemic, I've been here with other unions where we were able to go ahead and do our First Amendment rights. I've been through quite a few protests with quite a few other people. And it was very nice to be able to do so, because sometimes the outside world doesn't know what we're actually going through. And that has changed since COVID. We can't do that anymore. We're in a place where we really need to get the word out. For us at Alaska, we always try to do the right thing. We pull permits with the city of CTAC. We pull permits with the Port of Seattle, and we follow the rules. Does it work for us? Not so much. Even when we're in the skybridges, you know, we get approached, we've done what we've needed to do, but they don't approach the other people that are at the other end of the bridge. I don't know. What's good for one is, I guess, not good for all. I appreciate your time and listening, but I wish that you guys would consider what we're looking to do for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thanks for having me.
Clerk Hart, are there any additional signups for today?
We don't have any additional persons signed up to speak. If you want to call from the room.
Yeah, is there anyone else present on the Teams call or present in the room today who did not sign up but wishes to address the Commission? If so, please state and spell your name and state the agenda item or topic related to the port conduct that you wish to speak about for the record. Welcome.
Go right here?
Yes.
First time doing this, but.
No problem. Just state your name.
My name is Brandon Johnson.
Brandon Johnson.
B-R-A-N-D-O-N-J-O-H-N-S-O-N. May I have a seat right here?
Please do. And then just state your topic related to port conduct.
Yeah, so I'm here to talk about the First Amendment activities here as it relates to labor relations and labor rights.
Perfect. Please proceed, and the timer will start.
Yeah, so I, too, am an employee here with Alaska Airlines, an employee of this airport. I got a COVID booster right here in this room. I've hugged total strangers. I've been attacked by total strangers. I've faced a whole gamut here. And I'm shocked and disappointed when we are permitted on the skybridge and your duty managers come out there to intimidate potential members of our organization. Those same people that you talked about earlier, those marginalized communities, those people that you are talking about protecting, are the same people that we are trying to have a better future for. But your police department comes in and questions us. When we're permitted, your duty managers come and they highlight things that we're supposedly doing wrong. But when we ask them, "Where's the proof? Show us your evidence." They can't do nothing. So I wonder, you talked about Dr. King, and as you know, Dr. King was a champion for labor rights. And I just wonder what his thoughts would be when the police, we're talking about the police, come and speak to us, when the police come and intimidate not myself and my colleagues. I just wonder what Dr. King would say about that. I mean, you brought him up, so I think it's fair to point out that we are being harassed, that we are being intimidated. And why is this allowed to happen? And what are we going to do here to change that? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there anyone else who is present on Teams or here in the room that would like to make any additional comments at this time? Well, thank you to everyone in the room for providing comments today. We really appreciate it. And again, it is an important part of the Commission's deliberation process. And so just lots of gratitude for you all coming out here, being vulnerable, and sharing your stories and experiences. And we take a lot of those, all of those comments very, very seriously. And we'll be looking into some of the items that you all have brought up today. Again, thank you for the time. Clerk Hart, please give us a synopsis of any written comments that we've received today.
Thank you, Madam Commission President, members of the Commission. We've received two written comments submitted for the meeting today. These have been previously distributed to you and will become a part of the meeting record. These come from Johnny Samra and Linda Boynton, who both write regarding the port's port package update pilot program, and note their concerns related to recent postcards announcing an upcoming survey. They state that the postcards for this survey announcement only went to 1/3 of homeowners with port packages, and without any details about the survey. They ask that postcards be sent to all homes with port packages and to work with ctacnoyves.info at each step of the program. And that concludes our written comments received today.
Thank you, Clerk Hart. So hearing no further public testimonies, we will now move to the consent agenda on our business agenda. Thank you all who provided comments today. Again, we appreciate your time. Moving us along to item number eight. Items on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered separately immediately after adoption of the remaining consent agenda items. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items covering items 8A, 8B, 8C, item 8D was removed, 8E, 8F, 8G, and 8H.
Sound moved.
Do you have a second? Great. The motion has been made and seconded. Commissioners, please say aye or nay when your names are called. Clerk Hart?
Thank you, beginning with Commissioner Coggins.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Cho.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Felman.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Hasagawa.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Thank you. Five ayes and zero nays for this item.
Great. The motion has passed. Great. So now I will move us back to item number 8D.
And I can read that into the record?
Please do, Clerk Hart.
Thank you. This is item 8D, Adoption of Resolution Number 3823, a resolution amending the policy directive for salaries and benefits for employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement established by Resolution Number 3820, and providing an effective date for all amendments as of June 1, 2024.
Commissioners, you received a briefing on this item at the last Commission meeting. Today, we are requesting adoption. Every year, you approve the salary ranges and grades for port employees. This year, we ask you to approve job titles, salary ranges, and pay grades that reflect the work underway to improve the port's compensation program. As you will hear in this presentation, the port is updating a program that is more than 20 years old to be more simple, more transparent, and more equitable. This is a multi-phase project. Approving the new job titles, salary ranges, and pay grades is a key element, and we will continue implementing this program over the course continue implementing this program over the course of 2024. Joining us today is Katie Gerard and Kasia Reitstein from the Human Resources Department.
Katie, please, please proceed.
So we have the presentation that we did, the briefing on at the last meeting, so we'll walk through those slides again for you today.
Yeah, and if you want to keep it short, that's your welcome to. If there's anything that you want to focus on, you're welcome to do that. And I think commissioners have some questions as well.
Sure. So our presentation really goes through the process that we have gone through to get us to where we are today. We brought forward a phased approach wherein this would be the first phase of implementation covering, just as Deputy Executive Director Goon said, the pay structure. Along with that is all of the pay grades and the job titles with the new pay grade and the new structure assigned. So that is the gist of what we are looking for. There are some, of course, technical corrections that are proposed as well to update some definitions and just provide additional clarity in the resolution itself. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have, but the information is in the briefing.
Thank you for just sharing a little bit more about that. We did pull this item on, from the consent agenda today. And just for the public's benefit, in February 2024, the commission actually received a comps plan briefing. Each commissioner received that information. And at that time, we did ask for a delay in the process and asked that we go through a more thorough, deeper analysis, legal analysis, also being able to find, we had a lot of questions relating to the practical issues and being addressed in your process and how that worked. And many of us felt like that we got sufficient information back. That said, the item that comes before the commission today, we did receive more concerns from employees at the port, asking us to continue to engage on this issue, and additional questions and comments that us as commissioners don't have the answers to and would like to get additional information on, especially around how this would impact people from a practical standpoint and some of the market analysis that will be conducted. And it's my understanding that it's hard to pinpoint some of that in Phase 1, and we would get more clarification as part of the Phase 2 process that HR is conducting. I'm confident that that process will go really well. That said, I know we do have a motion in front of us that will be introduced, and so I'll kick it to Commissioner Hasagawa to introduce that motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we direct staff to come back in advance of the implementation.
Madam Commission President, through the Commission President to Commissioner Hasagawa, could you please move the main motion to adopt this resolution first?
I think there's two options on the motions that Commissioner Hasagawa would like to consider.
I actually, I would draw the former verbiage, and I'd like to move that we postpone consideration of this item to a future board meeting.
So we will need to have the main motion on the floor in order to be able to postpone it to a different date.
Okay.
So just go ahead and move the motion to adopt the resolution, and then your motion to postpone will be in order.
Okay. Madam President, I move adoption of resolution number 3823.
Do you have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded.
And she has the floor.
And I would like to, is it a motion at that point?
To postpone to a time certain. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. As stated by the clerk.
In the next meeting?
The next meeting would be June 11, 2024.
So Madam Commission President, through the Commission President to Commissioner Hasagawa, I hear there is a motion to postpone to a time certain to June 11, 2024, for this resolution.
That's correct. Clerk Hart, will you call the roll?
Was there a second on the motion to postpone?
I'll second.
And I can. Bear with me just a moment. On the motion to postpone this item to June 11, 2024, beginning with Commissioner Cawkins. Thank you, Commissioner Cho.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Felamann.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasagawa.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Thank you. Five ayes, zero nays to postpone this item to June 11, 2024.
Thank you, Clerk Hart and commissioners. So we will move to postpone. And I know that is not the most favorable solution for our HR team, but we will send those additional questions and hope to get answers in the meantime. Thank you again for the time.
Thank you.
All right. So moving us along to our new business section of the agenda, we have three new business items today, that those are items 10B and 10C will be heard together, with items 10B being a briefing and an action request on item 10C. Clerk Hart, please read the first item into the record, and then Deputy Executive Director Goon will introduce the item.
Thank you. This is agenda item 10A, introduction of resolution number 3824, a resolution to determine 500 mitigation credits from the port's Terminal 117. This is T117, mitigation bank site R surplus, I'm sorry, I wanted to say area, mitigation bank site R surplus in accordance with RCW 53.08.090 and EX 30, and to authorize the executive director to enter into a purchase and sale agreement to sell those credits at fair market value.
Commissioners, the port was recently approached with an offer to buy 500 habitat credits from the port's Habitat Bank at Duwamish Rivers Peoples Park. This transaction would be the first of its kind for a port in Washington State and represents a major accomplishment for our environmental team. We will seek adoption of this resolution at the next commission meeting. Presenters today are Sarah O'J, Director Maritime Environmental and Sustainability, John Sloan, Senior Manager Environmental Programs, Environmental Planning and Permitting and Compliance, and Kathleen Hurley, Senior Environmental Program Manager.
Thank you, Commission and Deputy Executive Director. This is Sarah O'J, as mentioned, and just so pleased to be here today. We're going to introduce you to a topic this afternoon, a proposed habitat credit transaction. It's very exciting. It's a great opportunity for the port. We'll be asking you to consider a resolution to move this forward. Just a couple words about how we got here. With foresight and vision, the port has prepared for many years by establishing a mitigation bank line of business and methodically cleaning and restoring lands. So we will be prepared for opportunities like this one. I think you will find that this transaction we propose has multiple benefits for the port, including financial and environmental benefits for the port and the region. As well, this transaction can help the port make increased progress on our century agenda goals. You'll hear a little more about that in our presentation. And the transaction leads the way in demonstrating an application of mitigation bank tools for ports in Washington State. With that, I want to transition to the formal presentation and our program staff presenters here, John Sloan and Kathleen Hurley.
Thank you, Sarah. If we could go to the first slide. So thank you, commissioners, Deputy Director Goon. We're really excited about this, to be here. This is, we're going to be talking about a resolution to surplus and sell mitigation credits, as well as authority to sign the purchase and sale agreement with our customer to sell them at fair market value. And first, this is a long journey to get to this point, and we've built a project that we're very proud of. I want to hand it to Kathleen to describe what is a mitigation bank, because it's not common knowledge for most people, and what is a mitigation bank credit? And how does it relate to the Duwamish River Peoples Park? And also share some, kind of an update of where we're at with that project and all the success that we've had with it.
Thanks, John. Next slide, please. So the Duwamish River Peoples Park and Shoreline Habitat Area is a 14-acre site that's located in the South Park community of South Seattle. It's very exciting because, as John mentioned and Sarah mentioned, it took us over 20 years to develop this site, from acquisition to cleanup to then actually building a habitat restoration site that includes important public access areas that connects the community to the river. As part of this plan, this is our first mitigation banking site within our mitigation banking plan. And a mitigation bank is essentially what we would call sort of a conservation finance tool whereby a bank sponsor, which in this case is the port, builds a habitat which is larger than, which is typically larger an area, that then generates credits. And those habitat credits can then be sold to entities that need them, need to offset their impacts within a watershed. These can be used for port's use, they can also be used for other maritime industries. And so it also relates to our mission to support maritime industry. So this site has generated 521.5 mitigation credits, or what we've also called habitat credits. This site is, it's important to mention, is under a conservation easement. The sale of these credits, the transaction of those, does not change the port's commitment to the site. We will retain ownership. We are in a 10-year monitoring plan. We have a 20-year, and after the 10-year monitoring plan, we have a 20-year stewardship commitment. So we will be engaged and involved in this site, no matter what. As the bank sponsor, we are obligated to ensure that this site continues providing those important environmental benefits in perpetuity. As I mentioned, this is the first project in the port's mitigation bank proposal. We first came up with this site as part of a plan in the Duwamish River Restoration Plan in 2009, that was further refined in our portfolio restoration plan in 2016, and then finally in 2019 in our mitigation banking prospectus submitted to the Washington State Department of Ecology and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. T117, or mitigation bank site number one, has been a cornerstone of those plans throughout the entire process. What we know now, three years in, into our monitoring plan, is that this site is an astonishing success. It has increased the acreage of marsh in the Lower Duwamish by 40% while also providing important public access. Additionally, we have caught chinook, and through our monitoring plan, we have not kept them. We release them when we are monitoring. But we also know it's become, and it will continue to become, an important fish, wildlife, and public community asset. We have planted over 40,000 native plants at this site. We continue to monitor them. As I mentioned, we are in our second year of monitoring of a 10-year monitoring plan, and we anticipate ongoing success and benefit from this site, both from the environmental aspect, the public access, and then also with this transaction, hopefully from a financial standpoint. So with that, I will pass this back over to my colleague, John, to continue discussion of this.
Thanks, Kathleen. Next slide, please. So Kathleen mentioned some of the important dates here. I just wanted to review a quick timeline. The first date on here is 2016, when we started the Habitat Initiatives line of business, but it goes back long before that. The site was purchased in the year 2000. And then in 2006, after some deliberation with the Environmental Protection Agency, our commission, your predecessors, went into the neighborhood in South Park and asked the community, "What do you guys want us to do with this site?" We had planned on doing some maritime industrial use. The community spoke loudly that they would like to see habitat and public access built there. And unanimously, your predecessors approved that as a future use. Then we set about to cleaning up the site through 2013, 14, and 15, then designed the habitat that would follow. As Kathleen mentioned, we submitted our approval for a bank in 2019. Then we really set about marketing these credits. The site generates 521 credits. We needed customers for those credits. The credits are surplus to our needs. And then in 2024, earlier this year, we had the fortunate circumstance of a customer we'd been courting came forward and said, "Yes, they would like to purchase 500 of these credits." Next slide. Some really important background here. There are 521 credits, 0.5, being generated at this site. We're proposing to surplus 500 of them. We have a pipeline of credits to serve our own needs and our own liabilities through many additional sites that we have in our inventory of restoration sites. So these are surplus to our needs. And as Kathleen mentioned, we're not selling the Duwamish River Peoples Park. We're selling the intangible assets that reflect the ecological lift that's represented by these credits. We are on the hook to continue to own the site, maintain the site, keep it shiny, and really serving the community in perpetuity. One other important point, we've determined that the credits are surplus pursuant to our new mitigation banking policy for surplus and sale of credits, as well as state statute related to surplus of property. Next slide, please.
One second.
I wanted to underscore the benefits of this transaction. Through this transaction, we continue to build habitat in furtherance of our century agenda goal. Oh, fact one.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have controls here.
It's the last one.
Uh huh.
Here's to pretending.
I can wing it.
Talk about the benefits there.
Yeah, we have a goal under the century agenda to enhance, restore, or create 40 additional acres of habitat. The Duwamish River Peoples Park gives us 14 acres. We have plans to develop another 10 at Terminal 25, and as I said, an inventory of other sites through this conservation finance vehicle to get to the 40 acres and hopefully beyond. The cash flow from this transaction that we're proposing will be, or can be, used to support additional habitat restoration. And through this first transaction, we've established a process, templates of the purchase and sale agreement, a term sheet. The process we go through to surplus and sell credits has now been clearly articulated, so expect future transactions as well. And the thing I'm really excited about is this is a perfect example, in my view, of the triple bottom line. The Peoples Park, through the viewpoint pier, public art, canoe and kayak launch, it's easy to see the community benefits associated with that project. 14 acres of habitat, providing Chinook salmon refugia, also easy to see the environmental benefits. Now with this transaction, we can see financial benefits, too. So all three boxes are ticked, and this project is essentially paying for itself. Next slide. Just want to restate the request. This is the first reading of a resolution. We wanted to give you information about the transaction and the mitigation bank site. We'll be coming back on June 11 for second reading. We'll be asking the commission to determine that 500 credits are in fact surplus in accordance with state statutes in our port policy, and then authorize the executive director to sign the purchase and sale agreement with the customer to sell them at fair market value, which we've determined is approximately $48 million. So with that, we'll entertain questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Are there any questions for staff at this time from commissioners? Commissioner Hasagawa.
So how many credits total are we talking about, involved with the sale?
500 credits, mitigation credits.
Five, how many of those are, is that for the Peoples Park?
The park generates 521.5 over time. 500 of those will be transacted in this action.
And this would be the first time we've engaged in something like this at the Port of Seattle? Is this the first time this has happened for any other port authority?
This is unique in terms of its size and type of any kind of mitigation bank transaction sponsored by a port. There are other public and private banks in the state, but none have had a transaction like this.
It's our understanding that no other ports in Washington have sold their credits. So some ports have credit banks, but they use them just for their own purposes. And then there are other banks that are, have done several transactions but not owned by ports. So this is unique in that aspect.
But we're not the first public entity to have ever sold. There's another example of another jurisdiction, Washington State, for example.
The Washington State Department of Transportation, working together with the City of Kent, has a small bank in the Green Duwamish, and they sold, I believe, one to two credits a couple of years ago. Very, very small-scale transaction. No bank, public or private, in the state has had a transaction of this magnitude.
So who currently uses habitat credits?
Habitat credits are used by developers, maritime industrial folks who need to repair or build a new dock, have some development that impacts the environment, usually aquatic areas or wetlands, or listed species. Regulations require that they offset those impacts. So they need either to build a project on their own site, which most of our folks on the waterfront don't have the room to do it, or they buy credits from a party like the port, who builds them in advance and then can transact them with them. And those are essentially extinguished. The regulatory agencies that are issuing the permits for that development recognize those credits, extinguish them so they can't be sold again, and then the developer gets their permit to move forward.
Okay, but we're not talking about opportunity to develop any piece of the Peoples Park?
No.
Nope.
And why would we, what does it mean to sell our credits?
So to sell the credits, we have a line of business. So to sell the credits, we have a line of business we set up in 2016, knowing that we had this long list of properties that we wanted to do habitat restoration on, but lacking for different funding mechanisms. Sometimes we do restoration to serve our own mitigation needs. We're repairing, like, Terminal 5, we might need to do some, an acre of restoration somewhere, or the SAMP, and we would have to do that work somewhere on our own site or purchase them from somebody else. The purchaser of these credits owned a shipyard, ran a shipyard during World War II era, at the north end of T-5. They have historic environmental liabilities that they need to offset, and they're using our credits to do that.
So what does this mean for the Duamish River Peoples' Park?
And the site was designed for credits that could be sold. The site will not change in appearance. One of the obligations of selling these credits is that we maintain and act as stewards of the site so that that environmental benefit endures.
So why sell instead of just have our own restoration project?
We're trying to achieve the Century Agenda goal to get to 40 acres and beyond someday. So this is the conservation finance mechanism we're using to get the cash flow we need to invest in more and more habitat. Otherwise, it's just using tax levy dollars or general fund money to build habitat. We like the idea of using other people's money to do it.
It brings other revenue to bear on the interest.
And I would like to just add that, Commissioner Hasagawa, with your question of what happens at the park, as Sarah mentioned, nothing changes. We have a conservation easement that is over the park property, which means that no other type of development would happen there. And so it will maintain its public access, the habitat benefits, that will not change. It's really, credits are awarded based on the uplift, the benefit that's provided from constructing the habitat and those benefits.
Thank you for acknowledging that this is, that there's an easement in place that preserves the ecological integrity of the Duamish River Peoples' Park, as well as the community benefit of that park. And as opposed to just keeping the credits and using it for our own project, I'm also hearing you say that it expands our opportunity for habitat restoration in other places. So more than just like a business transaction, I think it's important that we're just lifting up and exposing that this is part of a greater strategy to broaden our footprint towards some of our environmental goals for our properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasagawa, for your comments and questions.
Oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Cho.
Are we aware of any other ports that have been able to sell their carbon credits?
You asked carbon credits? And this is regarding habitat credits?
Yeah.
So we're not aware of any other ports that have sold habitat credits?
So we should get an award for that, I think. I might have one for you. You know, I think there's an argument to be made here. I understand the argument from the port perspective. I don't disagree with the philosophy that we need the capital to do this work, and this is an opportunity for us to recapitalize so we continue the flywheel. But there's also a more macro argument that could be made, that by selling the credits and not banking it, you are allowing others to just pollute, you know, and enabling others. In theory, it's kind of zero sum, right? And so I'm curious, you know, why, with the line of, other than a financial reason, which could be the only reason, which is a fair argument, but at the end of the day, wouldn't we be doing a far greater impact by just banking the credits?
No, the credits are designed as mitigation. And it is a fair critique of mitigation that some have portrayed it as a...
What do you mean by no?
The credits, the park is designed, and we've pursued certification of the site for credits to be used as mitigation.
Correct, but the credits then are sold by two corporations that go out and pollute.
Well, in this case, these credits are resolving historic natural resource damage liabilities. So the, and I'll make my sales pitch for mitigation banks as being better than a zero-sum game. With mitigation banks, you're generally building a project, a restoration project, that's larger, strategically located in the watershed, and have more benefit to fish and wildlife than if a private party who had some sort of either future liability for a permit mitigation or a historic liability just went and built it on their own site. It would be smaller, poorly managed, lots of examples of how projects like that have failed. So by doing work in advance that's larger and better located, we're actually getting ahead. We're doing things that make a difference. And the federal government, state government, have all recognized that mitigation banks are a preferred method of mitigation, as compared to what they call permuti responsible or private party mitigation that's smaller and not as valuable.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I disagree with any of what you just said. I guess my point is, if we harvest these habitat credits, and we have them in our hand, right?
Yes.
We could choose to hold on to them indefinitely, right? Or we are, as we are doing now, choosing to sell them off, which is to offset pollution somewhere else.
Right, they will be used to, it's a mitigation tool. So it'll be used to offset impacts, maybe it's not pollution, but impacts, that's their intent. So kind of the end user is irrelevant if you adapt the regulatory construct of a mitigation credit.
If I may, I see that Director Stephanie Jones-Debens has her hand up. Would you like to add some comments to Commissioner Cho's questions?
Yes. Thank you, President Mohammed. I wanted to add my perspective on this as a maritime director, and actually when we created the Habitat Mitigation Bank, was when I was the environmental director for the Maritime Division. This is a vision that we've had for quite some time, and the idea is that if we just use a tax levy to build pieces of habitat, we'd only be able to build so much. But the idea that we built a bank, and then this creates like a self-funding mechanism, we get these funds in that continue to support, and it doesn't specifically go into a fund, but this is funds that continue to support generation of more habitat, and really help support, and I will say, the other thing about this is that we have an expertise that, in building habitat, that very few have. I would argue we are the best at this in our region. So we build habitat, and it works. This allows us not only to be the builder of habitat in a way that really, that others couldn't achieve, but I think even more importantly, it creates a self-funding engine that then creates more habitat. That was the vision when we created this, I guess it was seven years ago, and this is the very definition of patient capital, that we have been at this for quite a while. This is a realization of a, really, a vision that we've had for some time to really enable us to continue building more habitat. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
I just want to be clear about what point I'm trying to get at. I was trying to get at you guys, but clearly it's not registering. If there is a financial aspect to this, and that is the reason why we're selling these credits off, let's just admit it, right? And say, like, saving the environment costs money, and that's what we need, and this is a way for us to do it perpetually, right? I was trying to ask you if there's other reasons why we would sell off the credits other than the reasons that Stephanie just pointed out and that you all are telling me, but I think we should just be really transparent about this. Like, sustainability isn't cheap. I go around the world, and I say this all the time, this isn't cheap. And it makes us, as a port, more expensive to do business with, quite frankly, right? There's an argument here that someone's got to pay for it, right? And the question is, very poignant, do we use tax levy dollars? Do we use, you know, where do we get the money for it? And if we could, if we create, if we create the system whereby others will pay for it, I agree with you, John. I do think this is an incredible way forward, but there are, there are those out there who will argue that we should just hold on to these credits, because on net, it's a net positive, right? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
That mitigation banking, oops, wrong, mitigation banking, isn't the only way that we're accomplishing the Century Agenda goal. We have a sustainable shorelines program where we're softening hard shorelines, installing wood and topsoil and marsh plants, et cetera, and much of our restoration goals will be achieved through that as well. So this is part of a kind of a multifaceted...
Yeah, I love it. I agree with Stephanie, we're the best at this. I just want to make sure people in the public who might be a little jaded about how we're doing this, understand why it's necessary. So thank you all for the great work.
There are critics of mitigation in general, but the regulatory construct of our state and federal government has embraced mitigation as the best practice for addressing impacts and overcoming them. And you'll find that many times the mitigation units far exceed the impact that was caused, so that you do get some lift with that as well.
That's great, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Commissioner Culkins.
I really like the system. I, you know, I recognize it's, you know, it's 24 years since purchase of the property. This is a process that takes a long time. But I love the idea that here we have this property, we're able to bring it from brownfield state to a habitat that's beautiful. I remember when we did the first turn of the shovel down with community members from South Park and Georgetown present. Then we now accomplish this, get this cash flow out of it that we could then use, say, for T-25, do the same thing, create a new set of mitigation credits, which then could then cycle into a new, and in perpetuity. I think it's a really clever way of dealing with what you describe as the sort of federal and state regulatory environment, while also just doing the right thing to clean up these properties and creating a sort of cyclical cash flow cycle that allows us to keep reinvesting in these expensive efforts. And particularly, I think it's, you know, going from the hypothetical to the concrete and saying, here we have this really important ecosystem on the Duamish River, that, you know, quite honestly, not all parcels of property are as important, but an estuary like that has got to be very high on the list of critical spaces in the overall, I think, ecological system. And so the fact that we get to do it in that space must be very impactful on an acre-per-acre basis. So I think it is, it does kind of, it's hard to understand from a transaction basis, but I do think this is a pretty elegant way to address the need to keep doing, you know, make sure this is cyclical and we keep working at it. I just wish it could go faster. I wish we could do it quicker. And so my question is, you know, it says on the benefits, cash flow can support habitat restoration on other port properties. What's next in the queue?
I can, we have a couple of sites that are in design. Thank you for your comments and your question. We have two sites. One is Terminal 25, and right now, we're almost, we're getting to 30% design. We anticipate construction in about 2020, 29, or 30. That's a 10-acre site, and in the east waterway, a critically important part of the salmon lifecycle in our saltwater marine environment. T-117 is in the estuarine environment. And so what we're looking at is kind of a whole of watershed approach of how can we phase our restoration such that it benefits salmon throughout its life phase? We also have another project, a much smaller project, about two acres, in Terminal T-5 Southeast, and that actually arose from our Sustainable Shorelines program, where we inspected shorelines and realized they were severely eroding, and we had an opportunity there to improve that shoreline, stabilize it, while also providing some environmental benefit. That one, we just are almost, we're probably at about 25% design, so almost 30% design, not construction date to be determined. But, so those are two projects that are in the pipeline, that we're working on design, and like you, we wish it could go faster.
And I know it's not an exact acre equals X number of credits, but like for T-25, what would, what would it generate in terms of mitigation bank credits?
About 642 at this point in time. At this point in time, we're, that, it's highly dependent on design and habitat elements. And so where we are in the design process is, we work with the regulators, and we're currently tweaking that conceptual design such that we can move forward to 30%. But right now, we anticipate about 642 credits will be generated there. And then the other site that we're working on would be about 50-ish credits. And again, because we're still in about early stages of design, you know, that can be tweaked a little bit depending on the benefits in the design of the project. But we seek to maximize credits while also maximizing the environmental benefit in these designs.
Thank you, Kathleen.
And I see Commissioner Fellman's hand is up. Commissioner Fellman? You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that presentation and the creative work that you're doing. A couple of thoughts. One is the idea that by us acquiring the habitat, we can do these larger pieces and have the continuity through the watershed. All that makes a lot of sense versus having industries doing it a piece at a time. But also, the question that Commissioner Cho raises is an interesting one, in that it's like paying, like, you know, your carbon offsets, rather than not flying, you are paying to that net neutral idea. There's an interesting thought in terms of, like, historic pollution, we still have our own liability, right? So we're going to spend some of these credits, right, for assuaging our own guilt. That is our obligation to do so. And I would, you know, I see, like, for all the other industries that are sitting on historic pollution and stuff like that, this is a great use of, you know, trying to put Humpty Dumpty back together again. It is an interesting question, though, if, if there's, like, you know, more recent events, like, you know, negligence going forward, whether that this has the same, it's still the benefit of having the habitat protected, but is, you know, otherwise, it's just like a liability for an industry that has an oil spill or something like that, right? There's no, would that be, I guess, the natural resource damage assessment? Would determine whether they would have to then turn around and do a habitat project, or would they just be paying for an incident?
You're asking, so I think regulators will determine who is obligated, and lawyers will determine who has liability. And I think I'll leave it at that.
No, but I'm just saying, like, you know, I'm just saying, the difference between a historic pollution issue and a current, like, malpractice, right? And so using the banking credits to offset, you know, somebody else's historic problem versus to offset, A, what might be seen as negligence, that, that's sort of getting at Commissioner Cho's question of, you know, are we, are we sort of letting somebody else? I guess paying for the credits is the way, if they're paying us, I'm just trying to think through the point, if they're paying us, then it would be better than just having money spent without having the habitat protected. So I think I just sort of answered my own question on that. I do like the idea, but one of the questions was initially that it was like a 10-year monitoring project, right? So in order to assure that this goes on forever, what is the frequency of monitoring to know the ecological values are preserved?
I can take that. Thank you for your question. We have a 10-year monitoring period. We're in year two, so we actually started at year zero, which is our baseline period. We monitor every single year. We, the monitoring, the performance monitoring varies a little bit year to year, and also as the project matures. So for example, we're undertaking sediment sampling for contaminants. That's happening almost every year in these early years, as well as fish sampling is happening almost every year during almost, like, I think it's years zero through five. But then as the site matures, then that monitoring frequency becomes a little bit less. We also monitor for the stability, the physical stability of the site, to understand how is sediment moving through the site? Is there any part of the site that's becoming unstable? Do we need to take action? We're also monitoring the vegetation, as well as all of the bugs that are produced by the plants and in the sediment, to understand what fish might be eating. So that is, that intensive period occur, and all of those items are being monitored throughout this first 10-year period. Then when we complete the 10-year period, we enter into what's called a 20-year stewardship phase. We will still have some monitoring requirements during that phase, but they will not be as frequent, and they might be slightly different than what we're doing now, depending on what the site looks like at that point in time. And when, as we approach year 10 of monitoring, then we will be working with the regulators to develop that 20-year stewardship plan.
And just to be clear...
All right, and this would continue to go on, this would, sorry, this has to go on forever, though, right?
Well, after the 20-year stewardship plan, we would, we would then, again, meet with the regulators and figure out what the next step is. I anticipate that we will have some level of monitoring beyond that, but, you know, to be determined what that would look like at that point in time.
And I wanted to just add in, to be clear...
I would imagine... I would imagine, go ahead.
Oh, just that, that 10 years of intensive monitoring and the 20 years of stewardship, our commitments at the port has already taken on, independent of this transaction. So because of our commitment to that land, that property, we will be doing that stewardship.
Well, that was my understanding. That's why I was just wondering, so now that you have this in perpetuity obligation on top of that, it was just sort of wondering, like, you know, obviously, I would assume once the site is fully mature, then you would be less likely to have it, you know, fail, shall we say. I would assume you're getting through this emergent phase, you monitor it, and then I would assume, right, you don't have to do it as frequently, but there's still some obligation.
There isn't, but it does, this transaction does not add an additional layer of stewardship commitment beyond what we've already committed to. And I think that the port is very proud of that property and will be a long-term stewardship in that area for years to come.
Thank you for those answers.
Okay, so you're saying 20 years, 20 years is the end of our obligation, technically?
I see three fingers up.
Good.
I just want to know.
Technically, we have a, each of these mitigation bank sites will have a 10-year, very intensive maintenance and monitoring program requirement. So we're out there almost every year. We're doing quite a lot of work. And then from year 11 to year 30, there's, it's called the Long Term Stewardship Program, where you're going out less frequently because the site has matured, it's maintaining itself for the most part, but still needs a little attention. And then from year 30 on in perpetuity, we still have some obligations under the conservation easement to maintain the site, go out, make sure it's staying, doing what it's supposed to do. And one of the coincident benefits of having to do these intensive monitoring programs and longer-term stewardship programs is it's allowed us to scale up our program. We now have conservation or contracts with the Washington Conservation Corps to do maintenance. We have a team that goes out to do the monitoring. We've developed protocols for that. And that then spills over to our, what, 16, 17 other habitat sites that aren't in the mitigation bank that enjoy the benefit of having that sort of stewardship.
Thank you. Does that complete your question?
Right. And we still have, we still have obligations, though, ourselves, right? We're sort of paying this forward, but we're still going to have to need credits for our own work, too, right?
And Commissioners, we are happy to provide additional check-ins with you if you have more questions, too. If any of you would like to meet, myself and our technical team would be glad to answer additional questions. I don't mean to cut you short, Commissioner Fellman, I just want to make sure you all were aware of that opportunity, too.
Thank you, thank you for letting us know. Do you want to answer that last question that Commissioner Fellman asked? Do you want to restate it? Is that a yes or no or a number that could be provided?
You know, I think, I think we can just take it offline. I took up plenty of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fellman. Appreciate you. Hearing no further questions for this item, is there a motion and a second to introduce Resolution Number 3224?
So moved.
So, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Commissioners, please say aye or nay when your name is called. Clerk Hart.
Thank you, beginning with Commissioner Cockens.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Cho.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Fellman.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Hosagawa.
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Thank you, five ayes, zero nays for this item.
Thank you for the presentation and for answering the questions. The motion has passed. Clerk Hart, please introduce the next item into the record, then Deputy Executive Director Goon will introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, President, members of the Commission. I just want to note that that resolution was just introduced, and it'll be back before the Commission at the next meeting on June 11th.
Thank you, Clerk Hart.
And then this is Item 10B and 10C. We will actually read these together today, beginning with 10B, Update Regarding Fisherman's Terminal Maritime Innovation Center and Site Improvements Project Interpretive Signage and Public Art Programs. With accompanying Item 10C, Authorization For The Executive Director To Authorize Additional Funding In The Amount Of $250,000 For Public Art From The Waterfront Art Pool For Fisherman's Terminal Maritime Innovation Center and Site Improvements Project For A Total Estimated Project Cost Of $36,858,000.
Commissioners, last week, we broke ground on Fisherman's Terminal Maritime Innovation Center. That project is part of a larger redevelopment effort to enhance the visitor experience through improved wayfinding, signage, and public art. The interpretive signage is nearing completion with anticipation, anticipated design completion by the end of this month. And following the status update of this project, we will seek your authorization to acquire art for the site. Part of the ongoing work of the Portwide Arts and Culture Board is to define the governance for a portwide public art program. Maritime has been working with the Art Program Manager, Tommy Gregory, for art support and guidance on public art selection, as well as civic art project management. Kira Lees, Director, Real Estate Development and Planning Administration, Kelly Purnell, Capital Project Manager, Waterfront Project Management, is joining us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director Keon and esteemed Commissioners. Happy to be here to talk about, yet again, about Fisherman's Terminal and its redevelopment. Two parts. Right now, I'm going to be talking about the process to bring new interpretive signage to the public space improvements we've planned and funded as part of our Fisherman's Terminal redevelopment project. And then a second presentation, I'll be joined with Kelly and Tommy to talk about enhancing our art investment at Fisherman's Terminal in line with our construction of the awesome Maritime Innovation Center. So, next slide, please. And next slide. This update is related to some important cultural investments we're making as part of our overall Fisherman's Terminal revitalization project. What we're going to talk about here is progress on establishing new interpretive signage and the partnerships that we've invoked to make this new signage relevant to our contemporary understanding of our culture and our emphasis on fishing and the history of fishing at Fisherman's Terminal. Providing new site improvements was a primary goal of the Fisherman's Terminal Strategic Plan that was pursued in 2016. At that time, we embarked on a strategic plan for the renewal and revitalization of Fisherman's Terminal at its centenary. One of the key assessments that guided our projects was the interest in engaging the public on the past and the future of Fisherman's Terminal. A whole series of improvements for the public realm came out of this aspiration to provide for educating the public about the role of fisheries, to hopefully increase revenues for our existing businesses there, to improve the partnership between the Port of Seattle and interested organizations, and increase literacy of the general public on the maritime industry. Those were the focus of our interpretive signage goals, and you'll see how we've been working with that ever since to bring us to where we are today. Next slide, please. The Fisherman's Terminal site improvements include not only the interpretive signage and art programs, which we'll be speaking about today, but a whole series of reinvestments that channel the public into important vantage points throughout the terminal to look and watch this working waterfront from a safe and proximate distance so the fishers can do their work and other laborers and tenants can do their work while at the same time providing for an invitation to the general public to come in and learn more. These improvements are the three general buckets. Landscaping, which include improvements to the crosswalks, signage, the interpretive program we're going to be talking about in detail today, but also comprehensive wayfinding for all modes of travel throughout the Fisherman's Terminal site, and a new monument sign in the entrance way along Emerson. And improvements to the site lighting. This illustration shows you generally where these overall improvements will go. But today, we're going to focus on the interpretive signage. Next slide, please. In order to really come to grips with the needs of improving the interpretive signage, we had to look at what our aspirations were, but also look at what's there today. Many, if not all of you, have been out to Fisherman's Terminal, and when we hired Cascade, a signage firm that supported this overall project in its early days, they were looking at what the existing signage performed, how well it performed, what it was consisting of, and what we wanted to do with it. One of the major facets of their observations was an absence of the indigenous life and the immigrant workers' voice and the interpretive history content that was on the signs that we have today. That became for us a major focus as we picked up that content and repurposed it for the new project that we're going to be talking about today. Next slide, please. There are three main focuses on our interpretive signage program. To promote visitor and worker safety was number one. It's a very complicated task to both be inviting, but also be very boundaried in the ways that we want people to observe with their whole families what's going on at the water's edge, where the North Pacific Fishing Fleet is doing incredible work on a seasonal basis. But we wanted to be engaging, so we took an inventory of the existing signage and we critiqued it. We also were sensitive to the Fisherman's Memorial, this important collective memorial memorializes those that have been lost at sea in the pursuit of fishing as business. These are often family operations, as you all know, and we wanted to make sure that our signage was responsive and respectful of the memorial, which will be untouched in our new program. Next slide, please. We hired a group of professionals to support us, starting with Mayor Reed, who is an interpretive signage consulting firm that's a sub to our architect, Miller Hall, that are based in Portland, Oregon. We hired Sharon Boswell with a firm called Statistical Research, which I know doesn't sound much like signage or history, but she is a historian that through a competitive process we selected because she had great depth in understanding and contextualizing environment and ecological history along with native history and has been working in the region for decades. And then we hired Headwater People Consulting to provide stakeholder outreach and recommendations on what we anticipated was a lively, refreshing, new component of the history to engage the native experience of fishing. Next slide, please. We also put together a robust stakeholder engagement process that represented fishermen in the region, tribal representatives, Washington's Maritime Blue, who is, will be our tenant operator at the Maritime Innovation Center, and local historians familiar with interpretive histories at Mohai, the Nordic Museum, the Burke Museum. We kicked off in May of 2023 to invite feedback from the stakeholders, and they continued to be engaged. Next slide. We also have a lot of people inside the port supporting this process, depending on their roles, and that included folks already at Fisherman's Terminal, Andy, Gregory, Ruth Parasudar, Dalmas, myself, and obviously Kelly, but Devlin, Jessica Carlson, and Roxanne Murphy is our latest investor here, our new tribal liaison. Next slide, please. As I mentioned in my earlier comments, native engagement was central part of our process, working both with Headwater People, but also working with our historian Sharon Boswell to learn ourselves more about the native experience of Fisherman's Terminal, both past and present, and to arrive at some fundamental interests that are just strictly related to tribal fishing in the Puget Sound. So you'll see that feedback figures into an entire panel dedicated to the attainment of fishing rights, particularly the boat decision, which is a key factor in how we are adjudicating native fishing throughout the Puget Sound and a key achievement in the civil rights struggle that native fishers engaged in in the 70s and 80s. But another key feature that we got from our engagement with Headwater People is that all the panels, regardless of their topic, will feature some representation of the native experience. So are pleased with that contribution as well. And I think it's important to say that we hired Sharon as a historian, and of course, she produced history for us, but what we also learned from our discussions with the native tribal members was that natives are still fishing in the Puget Sound. They are doing so today with great gusto, and we all know that. So we made some modifications, and are in the process of updating the more contemporary history of the native experience in Puget Sound. So, next slide, please. This became the theme outline as we pursue the content, which is not finalized today, but is on the road to doing so. We've had several rounds of conversations with our stakeholder teams and our historians, and on balance, these are the topics you'll see in our new content about the past and present of fishers at the terminal, both themselves and their boats, and the way they do their work, the native heritage, which we've talked about, the ethnic heritage, the many immigrant communities that have made their living fishing at Fisherman's Terminal, and women in fishing, what it's like to work on a boat, for instance. That will be one of the topics. But also of interest is the fishing industry. I'm commerce, roughly connected with the Maritime Innovation Center. So, it's enough. This is the general themes that we're pursuing in this content. Next slide, please. The outcome is eight interpretive signage panels, four at the Rotunda, and I'll show you in a map in just a moment, four at the Waterfront. Photograph chronology in the public breezeway in the C15 building. The Maritime Innovation Center will have its own signage. Next slide, please. Although some of the content is continuing to move around. Speaking what we've ended up with, sign on site orientation. On fishing rights, one on sustainability. For Fisherman's Terminal, a discussion of. To learn more about fishing vessels and gear and fish themselves, and that's a sign for the Maritime Innovation Center. Next slide, please. Here's some examples that are still in development, and after this, Kelly and I can take questions. As I mentioned, one of the key facets is the fish themselves. And in the sign that you see on the left here in red would talk about salmon as a for both natives and other fishers to fish salmon in the Puget Sound. Now, one of the. I guess I can't point on the slides, but you'll see this little QR code maybe could be pointed out below the first text block. Thank you. So QR codes have been around for a very long time, but as all of us that went through the pandemic have learned, it's a great way to extend content or provide content for any kind of poster, anything like that. We've allowed, been. Will be, in effect, continuously updated on the web so that if you are intrigued by what you learned on the sign, you can. Attend an interest for those that want to pursue that. So. So, really excited about the website that will also provide new content in historic observations and contemporary observations of life at Fisherman's Terminal aligned with some of these topics. Also, in the bottom here, this North Pacific Fisheries, some of the signs, like this one, will be improved with sculptural elements. So, each of these fish species will actually be built out in a more 3D sculptural connection, similar to the base of the memorial that you see on this slide to your right. That will provide a physical experience. If you touch it, also will enhance the ADA component so that, you know, the blind can also navigate those species in a different way, in a more sculptural way. And there'll be several signs like that that will be improved with some of these sculptural or interactive elements. We are finalizing our content. We welcome your interest in this project. We hope to complete our content in the next two months, and that will allow the signs to be created and installed in time for our opening days of the Maritime Innovation Center and our other improvements. Next slide, and then we can take your questions. And Kelly, is there anything else that I missed that I should have said, or did I get everything?
Nope, you captured it all. Well done.
Okay. All right. So, happy to take questions.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation, and this is an exciting project. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time? All right. Hearing no questions for this item is
Commissioner Fellman.
Commissioner Fellman. You're muted.
You're on mute, sir.
Never did that before. Thank you so much. I do am a big fan of interpretation, you know, and I have like two questions. One is, I think the QR code idea is really great and allows, like, culture continues to evolve. So, but it does create that opportunity to use less words on the sign because you can find more words later.
Yes.
And I don't know what the size of these signs, but in just looking at them, there's a lot of words. It just strikes me, there's a lot of text there, and sometimes if you get a wall of words, it's harder to dive into any one of them, and I know that's always a trade-off when doing interpretive work. So, that was just one of the things that struck me. And the other thing I'll let you, it's like, salmon is us. It seems like, shouldn't it be salmon are us?
Ah, I think that's correct, but I think they both may be correct. I will look into the grammar aspect of that, if anybody wants to offer an opinion.
It's like toys are us, you know?
Yeah. All right. Well, I will check into that. Back to the word count, and Kelly, maybe you could chime in with exactly how big some of these vertical signs are, but this is the ongoing conundrum for us and for our sign designers. They have provided us with an ideal word count. We've exceeded it in most cases. I have a feeling it's going to go back and forth until we land on something. And now, here's my perspective for what it's worth. I'm the person, you know, the 10% that read every word on an interpretive panel. I recognize I'm not that, you know, that's weird, right? But you want to give them enough to get going. So, we may end up with a smaller number of words on a sign, especially since we've engaged with this content enhancement strategy with the QR code. So, stay tuned. We probably will exceed the word counts that our designers have come up with, but not greatly so, and most of us need readers past 40 anyway, so we'll try to keep the signs or the words big enough to read. Kelly, did you, were you able to find out what, how big these signs are?
So, the big ones that you see here, the vertical signs, are three and a half feet by seven feet tall, and the horizontals are about a foot and a half tall by four feet wide. So, they're pretty big. But Kira is right, we have gone back and forth a little bit on the word count. We have a treasure trove of really good content that has been provided to us by both our historian and also Headwater People, who's done some narrative writing for us for the QR codes. So, it's the big debate as we're finalizing content of what should go on the signs and what should be in that digital content. So, it's an ongoing process that we're whittling down with our designers.
Oh, I'm clearly, but seven feet is a lot bigger than looking at this, so that does help interpret that. Just two quick other things. One is, like, you know, across the way is the Seattle Maritime Academy, and so, but they're, you know, in terms of like, how would you get a job in the fishing industry? Or how would you get a job in the maritime industry? Is there like a straight-up workforce content? I see in the blue economy thing, it says, you know, the last line says, jobs of the future, but like, you know, where would I go? Isn't this an opportunity to have, you know, dub, 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 get a job?
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll be working on that in the extended program for sure, but it's a great observation.
Thank you for that information. We do have another briefing for 10C, is my understanding, but could we call the vote for that? These two items are connected, and it's, the 10C is a, the amount that's being asked is 250,000, is my understanding, which is actually within the executive director's delegation of authority, and so we would like to take a vote on it immediately.
So, thank you, Madam Commissioner President, members of the commission. I would just ask staff if they have any material information that they want to provide in the 10C briefing.
If there's anything
We do, yeah.
Point of order. Madam President, I'm moved to remove this item from the agenda as it, the requested amount is below the delegated authority.
One moment, let me look at that, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasagawa. Either that, or we can call the vote now.
Well, I think there was a reason, so let me look at that very quickly. The estimated project cost is 36 million, so I think that the additional 250,000 was in addition to funding that had already been appropriated, putting it over the $2 million threshold for delegation.
I see. Do you want to remove your motion, Commissioner Hasagawa, at that point?
I, excuse me, what was the
Okay.
Motion? Okay.
Great.
Okay, all right. Perhaps staff could proceed to the next item.
We would actually like
Thank you.
to call the vote for this item.
Okay, so I'm
Without the presentation, we've reviewed the materials.
I'm hearing you, Commissioner. Thank you. So
I'm motion if we vote for item 10C.
That would be appropriate.
Seconded.
The motion has been made and seconded. Clerk Cart, please call the roll.
Thank you. One moment. Beginning with Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Cho.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Fellman.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasagawa.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Thank you. Five ayes, zero nays for this item.
Thank you.
Thanks, team.
Thank you.
The motion has passed. Appreciate the presentations we've received thus far. I'm going to move us along in the agenda. All right, so we don't have any presentation or staff report scheduled for today, so this brings us to item 12, which is referrals to committees and closing comments. So, this concludes our business meeting agenda for today. Are there any closing comments at this time or motions related to committee referrals for commissioners?
One quick one.
Commissioner Cho.
I just want to acknowledge a very special guest we have in the room today, Walker Britton. He's right here in the audience, is shadowing me today. He's a high school student from U Prep, my alma mater. He's graduating in two weeks, so congratulations. And if I recall correctly, you're going to Wake Forest University, so excited for you there. He's shadowing me this week because he has an interest in politics and business, and this is the place for both. And so, good on you. This is for a senior project, which means he's far ahead of I was when I was a senior at U Prep, so good on you. Last week, he spent some time with Congresswoman Marie Glusen Kim Perez and Nick Brown, running for state AG on the campaign side, and then this week, he has the privilege of following me around to learn about the bureaucracies of local government. And I've recently also learned that if he doesn't finish this project, he doesn't get to graduate, which means I hold your future in my hands. But no, it's been a pleasure to have you. I'm really glad I had this opportunity to show you what it's like. Wish you all the best, Walker, and we're going to make sure you have the best in your project and your class. I yield.
Thank you. You should have invited him to the dais. I didn't know that today.
Oh, no.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Just a quick echo of something Deputy Executive Director Goon brought up in Executive Director Reports, which is our commemoration of Memorial Day that has become for me a very special holiday and something that with my kids and their love of history, we've kind of, we dive into a learning story about a particular service member who died in combat, and I would commend that to all parents. It's a great exercise in learning about our nation's history and the extraordinary acts of service that people perform on our behalf, and so I think it's a wonderful way to celebrate that holiday and something we're going to do carrying forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hasagawa.
Thank you, President Mohammed. I just wanted to raise that I participated last week in a press conference with Governor Inslee, former EPA Administrator McCarthy, Paulina from the Duomo Shover Community Council. That was it, to raise awareness about the funds, the public funds that we received in order to fund some of our big transformative projects such as T-5. So, we got to get a walking tour of the terminal hosted by our operators, SSA, and we talked about how huge half-billion-dollar investments like that are only possible with outside funding from the federal and also the state government, and name specifically that, you know, the money that we get to support the clean air, the ports' clean air strategy come exclusively from the Climate Commitment Act and the funds that it generates. So, we look forward, as a commission, to be able to support continued revenue streams from the CCA and bringing that intention forward as well in NWSA.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasagawa. Are there any additional comments? Commissioner Fellman, I didn't see your hand up. Okay, now I do. Commissioner Fellman.
I just put it up. I guess I missed the motion for the last item that we decided not to discuss the art project at Fisherman's Terminal, but being on the art committee, I feel compelled to just say a couple of things. I think the artist selected, it's really beautiful. We did unfortunately get tagged, the Dosee mural, as you come in, gets tagged, and so it's something that we have to be continuously concerned about, will be invested in art that we have a way to maintain it as well. And I think these projects have been very collaborative, but I know we're waiting on getting a, some sort of a one-port art project consultant's report so that we can move forward as having this unified vision that the commission had passed some time ago. And I forget when that consultant's report is due, but I think it's very important that we have this really phenomenal art program portwide, and I just ask that we get a sense of when it's going to be done.
Thank you, Commissioner Fellman, and we'll make sure that we get answers to you for those questions. So, that, are there any comments from Deputy Executive Director Goon?
No, thank you for your time today, commissioners.
Wonderful. So, hearing no further comments and having no further business, if there are no objections, we are adjourned, and the time is now 2:45 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners and everyone at the table, if I can get you to leave your binders, we'll recycle those for you so you don't have to carry them with you.